Quiet in here. Still have seven seconds.
Church.
Quiet, I know. Good afternoon, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, January 17th. We begin tonight with a presentation from the Cedar Rapids Metro Economic Alliance. We have the President Doug Newman here. Welcome Doug.
Good afternoon, thank you for inviting me. I appreciate the opportunity to present. I've been up here a few times over the last nine or 10 years or so. A couple of the times, I think I was with Nick Newman. You know, as a night kid, you're asking me here by myself, so I'll do the best that I can. The, it's a good, great timing for me to be able to come and talk to you a little bit about what we do and the great work we have to see Marion. We're preparing for our annual meeting next week, Tuesday, a big event, and it's a good opportunity always to reflect on the year just completed and the year ahead. So I'm going to show you some thoughts that I also was preparing for my remarks next week. So again, I appreciate the invitation. Let me start with a thank you. The city of Marion has been an investor, a partner, and a member of the economic alliance. And before that, since the change for Congress since February 1st, since longer than our CRM lets me know. Maybe since the very beginning in 1980, we don't know for sure, but for a long, long, long time. But thank you for that. The relationship is good, the relationship is strong, the relationship is important to us, sir. So thank you. I sent a couple of things that are in your packet, and I'm going to use those to kind of just walk through some highlights. Our glory is always challenging to sell a study in a more limited format. We do a lot of things with a lot of businesses and in a lot of different areas. And I wanted to just try to hit some highlights, but certainly there will be things that I don't touch on, and I'm open to your questions and the dialogue and conversation. On anything and everything that you do. I included our 2023 action plan, and it's a good way to sort of quickly walk through the things that you do. Either coordinate, gain our core functions, even we worked in public policy and community development and business support and community development. We had workforce solutions when we formed the Economic Alliance, the merger of the Chamber of February 1 and downtown districts about 11 now 12 years ago. Workforce solutions was just part of economic development, it's own core function. For it now, businesses, the city, everybody, I'm just thinking all the time about workforce recruitment, the shortage of workers. So it's its own core function, it has its own budget, it has its own staff of leadership now, and that's a, that's a big chain of ours. So really five core functions now. And what I did, I didn't follow up the goals, you know, they just, you have in your packet, you can take a closer look at it. But I think there's some real opportunity when I think about things that we might work together with. It's, you know, lots of things that input or did Ryan's input on. One of the things under workforce solutions is developing a unique regional onboarding system. A number of Marion representatives were involved as ECIP, Brad, and many others participated in the development of a vibrant regional economic development. Which has been completed during the last six months or so. And we pulled that goal right out of there. There was a lot of talk about what a unique community this is, that people like myself, we're here accidentally, with no ties to either, or no, nothing that should keep them here with every intention of only being here for two years. And thirty more years later, I'm like, here I am. And there's a secret to our story. There's a magic to our story and to our community that does keep people here when they sometimes accidentally get here via job, via relationship, whatever that might be. We want to be more intentional about that, more visible about that, more bold and ambitious about that story. And I think it's a great role for a lot of us to work together. Within community developments, I want to make the point that community developments, I think, sometimes gets misperceived as downtown Cedar Rapids. A lot of these roles, urban housing, walkable neighborhoods, a lot of the stuff they do, done very, very well here in uptown Marion. Our community development core function is about any of those core districts. It's about check buildings, it's about new mode, it's about uptown Marion. And I think that maybe in the early days of the economic alliance, that was a little misperceived, but we've done a better job of creating goals that make sense for all of those core districts. So when we talk about communications, what's going on? What's the, what's the live news? What's the new thing going on? That could be in uptown Marion, that could be in downtown Cedar Rapids. And I think we really helped drive home that point, if people didn't already understand that, by the creation and the leadership, volunteer leadership of Brooke Crowe, who is chairing that Innovation Council. What a great way for us to say this isn't about downtown Marion, it's not about Cedar Rapids, to make sure that there are representation from other places in that. Our public policy core function, I included our RAC card. The, this is the short version, this is the version that legislators online read. We have the ninety page version for people like Sarah Mensor who want to do the deep dive on it, right? So Sarah, let me know, I'll send you the long version, you're not going to get together and talk about it. But pro-growth, pro-community kind of registration, not a lot surprising in there. We're working on the things you're working on. Childcare has been a huge barrier to workforce. All of our communities have a shortage of housing. There's broadband solutions. A lot of things that you've worked on, I looked over your legislative priorities, I'll bet are on your webpage, as I got ready to talk to you tonight. Some of these things are exactly the same. We have a great opportunity to work together. We do some community-based lobbying and advocacy. We'll have our board or day at the Capitol, and any of you and all of you are welcome to certainly tag along on that. It's great to take a huge delegation over to Des Moines and try and to within unified voice talk about those priorities. So pretty much in greater detail of some of the specifics on the public policy, but it's a, it's an important core function and one that a lot of the business community hides a great value. Within economic development, we have goals there, some metrics that talk about growing by 10% in connection to business developers and financial resources. It's one of our points of real pride. We can get out and talk to, look at the ones that's in business over the course of the year. Businesses are pretty savvy, they're pretty sophisticated, they're doing a great job of running their business, but they often don't know everything. And there's a lot of time, particularly in these last couple of years, when there's been so many pandemic-related financial resources, when we can point them in something that they had no idea about. Sometimes that's as simple as that two-thick B E, two-thick B F programs that hurt with. It's amazing how many businesses don't know that there's training dollars available for their business, that they just go and work through the, for through the product. Through the pandemic, there was employer training programs, and a lot of those relief kind of dollars. So we're always trying to put people to financial resources. The business support, the biggest change you'll see this year, trying to really focus not only just on the business consumer. I think the last time I was up here, when we talked about this Rally Gap campaign, we were trying to save small businesses during the pandemic. We really want to shift that also now to business, business. There's a lot of opportunities for businesses to do business with a local vendor, a local supplier for some of their things. And it's amazing how many businesses are willing and want to do that, and check that we did, about that opportunity. When we get out to businesses and say, did you know that this supply can also help the whole company? I didn't know that, I'd be happy to switch. Did you know that this service, those kind of things? So you'll see an actual organized campaign on that later this year. I don't want to spill too much thunder from R B next Tuesday, but we're going to have a little fun with the three-one-nine, which is our area code, and try to get people to bring their suppliers, their vendors, their business, business, business within the three-one-nine area code. We're going to launch the campaign on March 19th, on three nineteen. So we've got to have a little fun, because this can be too serious. But they'll look for that soon. Of the many, many collateral pieces that we collected, just wanted to try to make you a selection. This is maybe a little bit over Marion's base to remember, but I wanted to make a point again that we do an awful lot of things, and as members, you're welcome to them all. We do businesses, some of them in conjunction with Marion Chamber, and here in Marion. We do a lot of business programs, we do a lot of networking things, a lot of training things, leadership training things, the whole gamut. Did you a little bit of a sense of what's going on? And certainly tune into those things, and it'd be great to speak with people back there. I want to close before opening to any questions, just with thanks to you, Mayor. We see a lot of each other, I appreciate your presence at a lot of our things, and some of the dialogue conversations we've had. That makes the partnership stronger. I really appreciated this guy. He and I have had some great conversations, and I know that we can provide value. And having that strong communication, that strong back and forth, that ongoing discussions, make sure that we hold this opportunity to work together on something. So thank you, that means a lot to me. That's a lot of helping to ensure that the relationship works, to have these personal discussions, as well as just that you heard, knowing what's going on. Happy, happy, happy new year to that. I'll leave you at that. I've got a couple of other scripts, a lot of places that we can go with questions, if you have any. So thank you very much.
Questions? Thank you. Questions? Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, Doug, just a quick question. One of the topics, I think, that is going to probably, well, it has been coming up, at least by our group, and I anticipate will be a hotter topic as the legislature gets going, will be property taxes. Governor Reynolds did not make her, make that one of her top priorities. However, the legislature, led by the Republican Party, has made that one of their top priorities. We're not sure exactly what they're going to propose. My question to you is, what is the Economic Alliance going to, or how are you going to monitor that? How are you going to watch its progress and how are you going to report that back to the members?
Great question, and you know, most important issue in many, in many ways for us this session. And it's interesting to point out the political gamesmanship. I mean, really interesting that it wasn't in the governor's speech, when it's really been identified by Senate Republicans as their number one priority. So I know what's all happening, it seems, sometimes we don't, sometimes we don't know what's happening, I mean, those words, right? You know, property tax, I think, for business associations can sometimes feel a little bit of a trick, an issue. I think back to the income tax reform here just a couple of years ago. Listen, when we got the highest income taxes in the country, and we ranked fifty first on some lists, we go into that saying, that's not competitive. We're not in enough conversations when businesses, when even people are looking at tax rates, and we're at the very, very bottom. That doesn't mean, though, that we don't get into nuanced argument. We're not looking for the blunt instrument solution to tax reform. We always talk about transparency, simplicity, competitiveness. And certainly I plunged to you tonight that property tax reform doesn't mean sharp city, doesn't mean choke city services, doesn't mean steel control, and doesn't make delivering useful improvements a possible role of you. We are very aware of the issue that we had, and I promise you that we'll stay very, very in touch with you. Now, if there are ways to relieve some property tax burden, because again, back to the ratings, taxing denial, and it does sometimes put us at a competitive disadvantage. So are there means with being conscious of city government, just going forward with the property tax? We want to be in that situation. And I think one thing, getting in the weeds a little bit here, and Sarah, right? Not with, not with everybody, or with the broad audience, but you know, one of the strategies there is to, you're not going to see us likely come out on day one and register against a property tax bill, because registering has monitoring digits at the table. And especially on that, if we want to be in the discussion, we want to be at the table. We think we can bring solutions with sort of a toe in city government role, then a toe in. I hope that we can help all of us in the discussion, but absolutely be in touch and really stay in touch with Marion very, very closely.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, Sarah.
I will, we'll save our regular follow-ups for later, but I was just curious, when I think about, and I ask this more for, and as much for people who are engaging and watching this meeting or at this meeting, as they look for like what we're all doing or how we work together. Is there a, is there a plan with the Economic Alliance, with the partners? There used to be kind of a priority, I see infrastructures on the agenda. So is there a plan? Highway 100 was the big one for a long time. We all lived through that and enjoyed driving it on a regular basis. Is there a, whether it's a corridor level or regional level outside of the Sampiel, like, do you advocate for? Is there a list? Or is there a, if we're Marion, how do we get, how do we get to make sure that those initiatives, I'm assuming to our terraces, but then how do we break that up to make sure these bridges get built and all the things that have to happen to make those roads happen? Or Highway 30 being four-lane for the rest of the parts of it? I don't, I don't know, I don't ever dug that deep down in there. But is that still part of the agenda, or has that been kind of with a different group?
Yeah, no, I asked. We all know, I'm not sure that, A, this, right, I'm not sure I can go to a shared file and send you the PDF of the exact list. We usually create that really as part of the Washington DC federal delegation script. That doesn't happen anymore, or it happens in small subsets. We're sure we can still act with federal delegation for not taking the, you know, the fifty-two people on an airplane out to DC like we did when you were leading a lot of those efforts. But I think that, that single document probably doesn't exist as freely as it used to. But I think if you ask anybody that's engaged in this, the support letters, the priority list, inclusion or maybe the link. Still there, I think we all know it. Not the actual worst of the bottom, maybe some discussions, whether we reduce that to sort of a single, a shared agreement or something. Because I don't know that that exists, but the prior, the shared priority is absolutely.
Okay, and I wear a different hat when I say that, as much because of, with the YMCA, I often get requests for different projects as they're going into applications from different communities. Okay, can you support this? Can you write this letter of support? And I always feel like, okay, like we're kind of firing this all off here, but I didn't know as a bigger group, if we look to say, we got to fire it on this one, and when we get this one done, we get firing on this one. So appreciate that.
Conditioned structure, there's a lot of communities put their best foot forward with some of those, and then what's the, would we prioritize one or the other? The answer to that has been, we've written support letters and advocated for all of them, right? And not trying to prioritize, but certainly we're there, we're checking whatever we can help with.
From your perspective and working with Nick on partnerships, is there things that we should be doing as a community that we're not doing? That would help to, or is the city, that we're not looking at, that we're missing, that are gaps to our community's expansion, growth, health?
That's a great question. You know, one of the things that's been on my mind here, very late, and I guess. First of all, and I honestly don't just say that, this, I would say this in front of any audience. Marion is really the entity of a lot of places right now. If you guys are doing it right, the development activity, the growth activity up and down the line is just, is just really, really good, and that can be a follow-up for a lot of places. So they're doing, there are a bunch of things we do and follow up, there are not much. I wonder right now, what are, what any of us can do, maybe if we retire or move more aggressively. It's, it's, every single community is short of housing. Higher interest rates immediately stop a whole bunch of projects. So what can we do as an economic alliance, as governments, as state governments? I don't know where the solution they're going to come from, but it's a, that's the worst thing that they put the brakes on right now for the community development. If this takes a couple of years to come out and get interest rates on the used laws, we're going to be far behind on housing supply than in the R C A, right? You should be cleaning the gas on housing, not cleaning the brakes on housing. So I don't know for sure what the solution is, but again, we work with developers to say, what's the gap? How can we still, if you had a plan to go forward and you just pump the brakes, is there anything that we can do to get your, you to change your mind? I think that'd be a good, obviously, question to solve for us, because I think there's, there's some long-term barriers to growth and a slowdown of growth if we always continue to work on housing shortages across the nation.
Okay. Well, I certainly appreciate your coming today, and we appreciate your partnership, and you're always being receptive to our concerns and our questions. I appreciate your constantly keeping Marion at the table and part of the equation in the region. We all have to work together, and Marion is certainly doing its part to make the region attractive. And thank you for, for just keeping us, like I said, part of the equation, because sometimes it's hard for others in the region to sort of accept Marion's current status. So we appreciate everything that you do and your partnership. I know that Ryan has something to add, so.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. It's not a question, just more of a follow-up for council. Doug and I have gotten together quite a bit since I've started with Team Marion, and we're going to continue to do that. We've actually been, we, Team Marion have been pretty engaged with the large investor meetings, and we've got some other folks from, from our community, serving in different capacities. So what I, what I will make sure that we do is coordinate and make sure the Economic Alliance is clear on who our legislative point person is. So as we're coordinating our activities with our partners at the school districts and elsewhere, that it's clear on, so we can increase those synergies. And then obviously, once we get through our budget process, we can, to remember Mensor's point, make sure that you've got a listing of our CIP and some of the bigger priorities. So that way, at least we're telling our story, and along with that, a lot of what we've been doing on the housing front from a housing assessment, and really updating our comprehensive master plan and that process going. So we'll make sure that that, that the, that information flow is continuing, so then we can help them help us.
And I would just add that, you know, as you formulate a position on the real estate tax reform, just keep in mind, you know, I mean, through my work, I, I have exposure to what a lot of states do. And while we may have higher real estate taxes than other states, those other states have other fees or other ways that they, that they come up with the income that we don't have. And so in our state, we're limited, as communities, municipalities are limited to our sources of income. You know, and real estate tax is a big part of it. And when a growing community like Marion, you know, is concerned about being able to fund public safety, you know, that's, that's a real concern, you know, for all communities. So I just hope that you keep that in mind and you stay in close contact with, with our leadership, because I know that you, you will, as this comes down the line and you formulate a position and a response to it, so. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate you coming out today.
Thanks so much, I appreciate it.
Take care. Okay. Next on the agenda is a budget discussion of capital improvements program.
Your Honor, if I can, before Brian begins his presentation, I promised him I would give a little bit of an intro. So first, first and foremost, what you're going to see today, I'm, I'm really proud of the work that the team has done. That's Brian, Kim, Leanne, Michael Maloney with D A Davidson, and really the departments. We listened to the feedback that you had during last year's budget process, specifically the budget workshop. And we have tried to incorporate throughout this entire year, different steps along the way to address those, to make sure that we're having regular touchpoints with the council, so that we're not just dropping this all on, dropping this all on you at one point in time. And this, this presentation is meant to provide information. We're not going to be looking for direction tonight, but this is one of those data points that we want to make sure you have time to process and be prepared for our budget workshop in a week, two weeks, a week and a half, January 27th, right? January 27th. So we will, you'll likely have questions. We encourage questions, we hope for questions. We do just want to manage expectations. There might be some questions that we will not be able to answer right here and now, but we will keep track of those questions and make sure that we have those answered for you during the, during our budget workshop session. But again, I'm really proud of the work that the team has done. This has been an incredible task. We were hoping to get before you sooner with this, but because of the, the work that they have done in, in basically deconstructing and rebuilding, wanted to make sure that we were doing it right. So I'm going to turn it over to Brian and let him take her away.
Yes, thank you, Ryan, and thank you, Mayor and Council. So Ryan's just said my exact first slide, so we're good. So yeah, so just to reiterate, our goal was transparency, to build a solid base, to back it up with analysis on all of our funding sources. And so we welcome your feedback, and we hope that we've achieved that, or we've at least started to achieve that as we move forward into the future years. So I just wanted to recap on our timeline and so where we stand right now. So this is our, in the light blue, so these are the council touchpoints. So the recommended CIP discussion is where we're at tonight, and as Ryan said, this will be to digest this information, and let's take it to the budget work session, where the whole picture, hopefully, will come together with all the levies. And then our goal is to adopt February, March alongside the budget. So again, I just wanted to say thank you to, to Kim Downs, our Deputy City Manager, and all of the department heads, because the collaboration part and the, and the analyzing of the funding with Malcolm, with Michael Maloney and D A Davidson, it, it took longer, but we feel it, it definitely reaped the rewards. So before we talk about the existing projects and the new projects, let's just touch on the major components of long-term capital planning. So you have authority, your projects, how, how do you, do you need a public hearing for your projects? Does it need to go to vote? Does it need a referendum, that kind of stuff? So it's the legal authority to actually cut out the projects. Then you have capacity. So you're talking about your, maybe your debt limits, so the 50%, or so that we have a 50% local imposed limit on the, on, on the 5% of the valuation, we have to look at that. The cash flow timings, we have local option sales tax, that's a big part of the CIP. Cash flow timings, when are projects happening, which fiscal year, that kind of stuff. Then you have your revenue sources, so your repayments as a geo-bonds, as a local option sales tax. We have our utility funds, all of that comes into play. So big picture, this is the recommended CIP that staff are putting forward this year. I'm not, I'm not going to go through the categories, but you can see them on your screen. A big chunk is obviously transportation and, and public works and parks. So the total project cost, the 216 million is across the whole next four years. But that also includes, if there's any project that's still on the CIP, that includes those expend, those expenditures to date for that project, if it's still on the CIP. And so hopefully, you can see that from your master CIP doc that's in front of you. So again, existing projects and new projects that we have layered on here for the 216 million. So some of those major existing projects that are on the CIP, and they're still in the CIP, and they're, and we have fully funded these. We have vetted the funding sources. The one, obviously, you're very familiar with is a public service facility. We're working through the financing right now. We're doing all that analysis. That is a big ticket item here. And then just going down, ones that have been in the past, been kind of hanging out there. So the funding for Albany Road Extension, great news for us and the city. So the funding for Albany Road Extension, great news um, for us and the city that that uh, project can move forward. And then you've got some that are always there, but as we move forward, we really hope that they take some traction now. Funding is also, as, as we know, a very important part of some of these projects, so. So let's look at the uh, new request that we received. If you remember, our last touchpoint was when we were talking about the ranking process. And so we received forty-four new projects from our departments for a total of eighty-four million across the next five years, from this year twenty-four to twenty-eight. So we broke those down into four categories. So the first is equipment that basically meets the criteria of our CIP that we put in there. We generally fund these from equipment reserve. Those are in our asset replacement schedules, so they are funded. Then we have our recommendation of those other projects that we're looking to move forward and put into our full recommendation. And I believe you should have a handout, you're, uh, also there showing these four categories and it's also in, in the council packet. So those are the ones that we are recommending that we layer into the CIP. And then there's others that are marked additional, which we will touch on i- in a moment, how those play into that. And then there's the ones that we're calling unfunded that we're choosing not to bring forward at this time. So this may be the most confusing slide. Hopefully I can explain it well here. This is what, we're just trying to give you a s- a snapshot here and some decision points and, and things to just kind of mull over and obviously any questions you, uh, you have tonight. But um, also take them to the budget work session where it all comes together, hopefully. Option A, on the left-hand side, is the staff recommendation for the new projects that will get layered into the existing projects. Okay, so these are all new requests on the left-hand side. It's worth to note that every one of those except the caboose, we are looking to fund from local option sales tax. Okay, so this is not any impact on the debt service levy. This is local option sales tax is the majority of these. But obviously transparency and options, we want to get a feedback from council. And so there's requests that come in that we're looking at potential funding. So we wanted to kind of show you other options, okay? So if your appetite, um, what does that look like? What's it going to cost? What's, you know, all those questions that we hope are going through our council's mind. Um, what's the impact on our levy? What's the impact on our residents? So if you look at option A at the top there on, sorry, so option B. We have option A, so the, so the total cost is across the five years for option A. That's what we're recommending. If you look under option A and the option B column, then you will see layered on, we just wanted to give examples. These are the projects that we see are their priorities, but we're, we're looking at the funding sources and we're seeing, okay. If these are funded and if they are geo bond, purely geo bond, this is the levy impact to your debt service levy. So you can see that option A would have an impact of about sixteen cents. And then kind of a go- just going down the list, you, you, so you can see that in creek improvements, it's a nine-point-five million dollar project. That would be the impact on your, on your debt service levy. And the impact would take place over kind of two or three years. So, yep.
Can I jump in?
Yeah.
So just to summarize, as we went through those eighty-four projects and the staff went through and ranked them, one of the things that we heard last year from council was as elected officials, you'd like to ha- make sure that you have the ability to look and have some options of selecting. Perhaps in, in your legislative minds, there are some things that you felt in your elected official capacity was more important than some what staff's bringing forward. We're looking at it from a technical aspect, what's important from roads, what are things that we think we are hearing from council? So option A is what we're recommending through that ranking process, but recognizing that we need to give you options, so you can make some informed decisions. We wanted to go through that second tier. So if council wanted to do some additional uh, or, or swap out some things, we've done that analysis on the right-hand side. So you understand what the cost impact of those decisions would be. So it's option A is what we're recommending, what we think is realistic, what we think we've heard from council as, as it relates to initiatives and projects that we've got going on. But these are the other ones that we've, when we've gone through our departments, our work plan, this, the strap plan, these are some important things that we think are important to reach higher. Um, that if council really wanted to, to, to pick from, it's kind of an à la carte menu, if you will, um, to give you some options. So we're not just asking you to just pick from a laundry list. And so there's some level of analysis to it.
And so one thing to add to that, um, as we go into the new local option sales tax cycle. Uh, we have started to layer some projects in, as you can see in your master document that's, that stated local option sales tax uh, twenty-twenty-one, which is when we held the vote. So that's not maxed out. So there is ability there, as we know that there's a seventy-thirty. As we look towards the future and the future needs that we may not know exist right now. This is geo bond, worst case scenario, fully funding from geo bond. So we know that there is some options with the funding sources. So that's just, we want to present, hey, if it's all geo bond for that project, this is worst case. Yep.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Since, since we're on this slide, uh, you know, and I like to get a copy of the slide, by the way, this was specific one, it's showing some information that we don't have yet. But I'm kind of curious, because you're talking about the levy impact, so I'll pick on fire station number three relocation of eight million dollars. Now, the majority of that is not out until fiscal year twenty-six.
Right.
So as we work on our budget, you know, what I'm, I, I mean, I understand what you're, I guess I'm not sure what you're saying here. Because we're working on the current year fiscal year twenty-four budget, but yet you're presenting something that is still two years beyond that. So we're not necessarily making a decision on that today unless you're asking us to. But the impact of that on the levy isn't going to be this next fiscal year, it's going to be two years down the road. So I'm a little, you know, do we need to break out the levy impact of some of these things by year? Since the majority of that fire station number three is two years down the road and not on the budget that we're going to be discussing next week?
Yeah, so, yeah.
Do you understand what I'm saying, Brian?
Yeah, I think so. So, yeah, so there is that focus on fiscal year twenty-four.
Right.
Which we will be working at the budget work session. This is more of the bigger picture for CIP, but we did want to, so when you see a debt levy impacts, debt service levy impact, yes. The project may be two years down the line. That levy impact will be about another two years. That will be the range of the impact in the next two years after the project is funded, correct? And once I get to the next slide, we'll talk about debt service projections. But this is, but this is definitely bigger picture, some of these projects, maybe in the next year, two years, three years, correct?
All right, thanks.
Can you just touch on the bottom link?
Yep.
Level of analysis.
Yep. Uh, was there any other questions?
Anything else right now?
On the slide? So, yeah, so we did want to, again, with the worst case, like I said, if it's fully funded by geo bond, the project, we, I wanted to give you a, a kind of reference point. And say, okay, so you can look at the list and be like, okay, I see this three million dollar project that I feel is a priority. You can get an idea of the impact if it's all on the G, if it's all geo bond. So you can see one million approximately would add an impact of three-point-five cents per thousand dollar in valuation. I did a kind of a quick two thousand, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand buy at home, that would be a four uh, dollar seventy cents on your impact, just for that one project. So it can kind of compa- compartmentalize it in your mind if you're looking at these individual projects.
Okay. Ryan, I have a quick question here. Can you just give us a definition of what rescue number one replacement is? Is that a, is that a truck apparatus?
Chief?
Yes. Yes, it's the replacement of our current fire apparatus. That's currently titled as rescue one. It would be replaced with a fire apparatus.
Okay, thank you. I was uh, getting that confused with one of our medics and uh, the numbers were lining up. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good.
So this next couple of slides, um, touch on the debt service levy and where that um, with, where the projected levy goes with the existing projects and the new projects. So there is various uh, funding sources, as you know, to the CIP. This is tied to our geo bond um, obligations. And so just to show, you can see, here's our existing debt service levy in two thousand and three. This would be the impact in two thousand, as we are rolling into this fiscal year twenty-four budget. This is where we're seeing our debt service levy push up towards, and this is mostly because of our, we are, so we have all this, you know, we have all of our existing debt, all of the projects that we have committed to in the past, like the library and the fire station and the YMCA. The small portion is the disaster loan that we have with the ratio that we still have three million dollars outstanding that we're working towards. Hopefully with some FEMA reimbursements, we can get that paid off, so it has no impact there. But you can see the projections, the gray is the um, is the current CIP projected forward layered into the debt service levy. Okay, so you can see that it's smoothish and it would be looking to peak around twenty-eight, twenty-nine, at around just short of two dollars and fifty cents. So the next slide here shows our debt capacity. So there's what the levy could do, but there's also the other side to that, and that's the debt, and that's our outstanding debt. So as you know, or, or may not know for people listening, there is a limit that the state sets you, that you're only allowed to carry so much geo debt. Five percent of your valuation. Now we, you can see here, we set a local limit of fifty percent. So.
Of the five percent.
Of the five percent.
Yes.
So, so uh, where you can see in twenty-twenty-three, we're around the outstanding debt of eighty million. You can see that going down. Now, the gray is our available capacity, because the way that this is modeled, it's assuming future growth, okay? So with the current CIP, you can see that our debt capacity would go down. Now that's, there's stuff that comes up, there's other projects that may get layered in. Now, the reason that that's going down and our debt levy is kind of staying, well, it's um, a lot to do that is with, with um, with um, interest rates, right? And it's how our existing debt drops off, but the new debt that we're borrowing is now at maybe five percent, whereas we were borrowing at two percent, you know? So um, that's why you're seeing a trend. Is there any questions about that?
Right, I think it'd be helpful if you can go back one slide.
Sure.
Um, because I, this, this was the slide that um, Councilman Jensen was um, kind of getting to, what's the impact overall? When, so when we're adding in the different projects, this is what it does to the debt service levy.
Because each year, um, our older bond issuances, depending on how they were structured, will drop off. And then new issuances will come on. We're actually, what's in the current CIP is bonding at a lower amount than we have done in the past. So um, that's why you'll see that outstanding debt draw. But like I said, higher interest rates um, are keeping our debt levy up there for now.
So, so this incorporates, this, this debt service levy incorporates the recommended projects in the CIP. That's presented before.
The seventeen million?
The seventy million plus the existing projects.
Right, okay. Just so we're clear.
Okay.
And then what that next slide showed was that as.
Was the.
As our, as our capacity increases, you, uh, according to your projections, the, the percentage that we use up of our capacity decreases, right?
With the projects that are layered in.
With, with those projects, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was just going to ask, Brian, I come, sorry, before we go back to that last slide, I'm sorry, I should have been quicker to ask my question. On this here, we're projecting out to the twenty thirty-five, I'm sorry, the next one forward. Thank you. As we're projecting this one out to twenty thirty-one, is, is this truly lined up with the CIP then? You know, we're, we're talking about bringing that almost from fifty percent down to, say, twenty-five percent. Is that, okay, you answered my question.
Yeah. So we have our CIP planned out to twenty twenty-eight. There may be some projects that get added because of the appetite for the need. Um, we only can predict so much, and so we've got in there that we're more kind of sure that we're going to do. But we know that things will come up, there'll be new, uh, new requests, so yes, it's, is it realistic to say, no, in twenty thirty-one?
Yeah, and that was exactly my question, because I know, looking at our stuff here, I can see where the twenty twenty-seven makes a little bit more realistic. I was a little bit more concerned about the optimistic approach of the continuing decline of the, of the debt capacity over those following years after that. So you answered that for me. Thank you. I appreciate that.
And it, it should be noted, I, that, and with the CIP, with any budget, right? The budget, it, the budget is a plan, is a plan of attack. And I wish we all had a crystal ball to know what inflation was going to do, interest rates, um, you know, what concrete cost was going to be. So this is, as we go through, this is the best estimate that we can and try to analyze it as, as much as possible. And so the idea is that once we approve, once council approves the CIP, that CIP, especially in that first year, is something that we know is absolutely going to happen. But as we continue to do the work uh, throughout the year, throughout the budget process, which as, as you know, is now a, a year-long process for Team Marion. Um, we will continue to refine that. So the CIP itself becomes a living, breathing document. So there may be things that come up, um, as we go through this process next year, that is going to force um, some other projects to get pushed back because of urgency on road projects or other growth areas coming up or, or different competing priorities that the council um, and, and the, the staff have agreed that this becomes much more important than something that was contemplated in year three of this, this one that we're presenting to you today. So it is going to be a living, breathing document. Um, but the, the, the beauty of the analysis that's been taking place here is, at least right now, we've got as, we've got more information now available to us to better predict and, and adjust course as we need to, which is why the slide um, before with that à la carte is, is, is really important. Because we can, as part of this analysis, we can now understand what the projected impact to that debt service levy is going to be. Because that's going to, ultimately, that's the bottom line for our residents. That's, that's going on to the property tax bill. That, that debt service levy is one component of an overall rate, and that's what's going to impact our residents. So if we can be extremely transparent about, well, this, this project costs this much to your tax bill, and is this important? Uh, as, as you're sitting up there making these informed decisions on behalf of our, our neighbors and friends and family. Um, at least we can now be very clear and say, this is what it's going to cost, here's what the project is, here's how it aligns with our strategic plan, and here's how it lines our community survey, which is what we heard from you residents.
I also just wanted to add a couple trends. I mean, the obvious trend that you're seeing or that Brian already stated is that we're looking to borrow less. Um, I think in the last two years, at least the last two, maybe even the last three, overall in geo borrowings, we've borrowed ten-plus million a year. We've got programmed what, four-point-five, four-point-six million in the CIP. The second trend I wanted to point out, and it's not as visible here, is when we are structuring debt payment in the past. Um, it was historically one of those, I call it kind of a stair-step thing, where we may be paid a little bit of principal, maybe a hundred thousand on a note. One year, and then the next year we might pay two hundred, and it, there were times that I would say that we kicked payment two or three years out, which is why it's, we were trying to communicate that levy increase is not from the new projects we are looking at. That jump from two dollars and two cents to two dollars and twenty-three cents, that's just existing debt. Those are debts that we've already, those ten million where we maybe didn't make a, a payment for a couple of years, or we made a very minimal payment. So we're trying to change this into more of a level debt structure. on repayment. Which means we're paying debt.
Okay. So just, um, just to kind of outline the next steps, we obviously welcome any questions. There's already been questions. Just for things for you, for, to think about going into the budget session, are the priorities, the timing of projects? Think about the debt capacity, what we issued here. I will get that slide. If there's any other slides, then please let me know or any other information, all of them. Yep. And then just looking at our, obviously our debt service levy and how that plays into the other levies that we'll be talking about at the budget work session. So if there's any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Is that the end of the presentation?
It is.
Okay, so questions?
Thank you for all your work, everybody.
Thank you for all your work, Brian. And Leanne and everyone else. Okay, next on the agenda is a discussion on the pavement management program. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jacob Hahn, Assistant City Engineer. I think we skipped a slide there first. So here to talk about the pavement management program. This program is part of our twenty one to twenty three strategic plan. The Iowa DOT surveys our roads every two years and decides a pavement condition index. I'll refer to it as PCI throughout the rest of this discussion here. The latest survey was performed in the summer of twenty twenty one, but the data delivered to city staff here this spring and March of twenty twenty two. PCI values range from zero to one hundred. There are a lot of factors that go into the PCI values. Some are listed here on the left, but overall, when they sum up, it's an indicator of the pavement quality. I've separated the PCA values in the four different ranges, greens being seventy five and above. Those are very good pavements. Yellows are more forty five to seventy four range, and oranges and reds are our poor payments that are below forty five. I'll use these colors for the, throughout the next few slides here. So if you can kind of remember, green is good and red and orange are bad. That'd be helpful. Someone added some notes there for me to it, but this is our overall road network for the city of Marion. Can you guess where our growth areas are? Out there on the outskirts of town in the very green there. Just for a quick reference, there's a horizontal red line there that's kind of longer near the north end of the screen. That's Twenty Ninth Avenue. The east side of that would be Thirty Fifth Street and then Tenth Street there to the west side of that as well. So most of the, the heart of the older part of the city is in your oranges. And then there's a few red scattered around, but for the most part, red, oranges and yellows for the older part of town and greens for the newer part of the city. Our concrete pavement has a design life of fifty years. The curve here below shows the, the pavement condition curve as it ages. Typically, for the first twenty to twenty five years, it's pretty flat and in stable condition. And then years twenty five to thirty five or forty, you'll see a start, a steep decline in the pavement curve or pavement quality. And then it kind of flattens out as it's in its poor condition. The payment management program's goal is to use preservation and rehabilitation techniques to extend the pavement life in a cost-effective manner. The idea is to be proactive versus reactive. Preservation techniques are techniques such as crack sealing or minor patchwork, and those are relatively inexpensive on a per square yard basis. Rehabilitation techniques are asphalt overlays, full depth patchwork, diamond grinding projects, and those are a little bit more expensive, but still relatively inexpensive when compared to full reconstruction projects. If you look at the curve on the right, the goal is to apply preservation and rehabilitation techniques to essentially reset the pavement condition curve and thus extending the pavement life at those lower costs. So let's dig into our twenty twenty one results here. The average PCI for all of our roads was sixty nine point zero. It was sixty eight point five when I back out all of our new development that occurred from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty one. So that'd be our new subdivisions. So when I back those roads out, our average road, roads were sixty eight point five. And when comparing that to our model projected of sixty eight point four, we did actually outperform our model slightly with that. But as you can see on the chart on the right, a vast majority of our payments are in the fair to, you know, great condition category. However, our roadway network has nearly doubled in size in the last thirty years. On the left are our roads that are over thirty years in age. As you can see, the vast majority of those roads are in poor or fair condition. They have an average PCI value of fifty eight point two. I will say that these are the roads that we spend a vast majority of our maintenance, rehabilitation, reconstruction dollars on. So this is where almost all the funding for our, our current programs go to. The roads on the right are newer roads. Those are the years, thirty years and older. They have a average PCI value of eighty two point seven. And currently, we do not spend very much money preserve, preservation or maintenance on these roadways.
Where, where does a resurfaced road, like if you resurfaced a road last year, does that fall on that side?
For like an HMA overlay program road, if we resurface that, that still stays on the column on the left.
So it's still on the older?
Fifteen percent you see there is mostly roads that have been asphalt overlaid in the last
Okay.
few years.
Okay, so that side is, is the actual age of the road itself.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So basically, the age of the road is from when we first put the concrete down
Sure.
until we tear everything back out and put new concrete down. If that makes sense. One thing I will note, from twenty, I had the, from the twenty nineteen values and the twenty twenty one values for these different breakouts here. The roads that are over thirty years in age, the decrease was zero point four in PCI, while the newer roads, the decrease actually was one point two. So we're seeing a star, steeper decrease in our newer roads. Why is that? Well, if we go back to the pavement condition curve, the older roads have already gone through that steep decline in their pavement lifecycle. While our newer roads are just approaching that steeper decline. So what that means, if current or past funding levels stay where they're at, we will start to see this right side look more like the left side. As Brian mentioned, there was a CIP budget item recommended for the pavement management program. So that was in that option A you saw earlier. I, the next two slides, I provided four budget scenarios. The present day is shown in the navy blue. The recommended CIP would be the yellow or orange. And then two other larger funding scenarios of seven million and ten million annualized in the green and the lighter blue. This slide here just shows the backlog. So that'd be work that is needed to be performed. So the recommended CIP budget scenario for that would essentially flatten out that backlog and keep it steady. And then the next slide here is our average PCI level. So that's projecting our, with the recommended CIP for our average PCI to be at fifty nine point six. This is just below the city established target of sixty point zero. However, this model does not forecast any new roads added, so we will likely be higher in that number as well as, as you can, as I mentioned previously, we did outperform the model. So I'd like to get a few more years of data in comparison to check against the model, see how it's. So what would the recommended CIP pavement management program look like in, in terms of actual work performed on the city streets? I developed a quick four-year program here utilizing those funding scenarios. The areas in red will be reconstruction, orange would be asphalt overlays, and green would be pavement patching projects. So this would be twenty three, twenty three potential projects that would continue a reconstruction of Third Avenue, kind of by FMI there. A Twixtown Road realignment there at Marion Boulevard. Asphalt work on West Eighth Avenue, Lindale Drive, some residential streets in the uptown area as well as Tenth Avenue, eastbound lanes only, heading from Thirty Fifth Street to Highway thirteen, as well as a large patching project on Twenty Ninth Avenue and Eighth Avenue. Twenty twenty four, we'd be looking at a reconstruction of Fifth Avenue from First Street to Seventh Street. Some patching projects on Twenty Second Street on the south part of town. Second Avenue as well as West Eighth Avenue near the Indian Creek Bridge. Asphalt work, Tenth Avenue this time from Thirty Fifth Street to Highway thirteen going westbound, as well as Thirty First Street and Eighth Avenue in the uptown area. Twenty twenty five, this is when the funding levels increase a little bit. You'll, and also with the Seventh Avenue projected federal funding. So that's that project in red there, as well as a reconstruction of First Avenue from Fifteenth Street to Twenty Second Street. A bunch of asphalt overlays in residential areas as well as patching projects on Thirty Fifth Street, Windermere, Thirty First Street, as well as the west side of Twenty Ninth Avenue. And transitioning to twenty twenty six, we got McGowan Boulevard area for some patching projects as well as Willowood and Thirty Fifth Street to the south there, kind of by where public services currently and reconstructions of Twenty Second Street from First to Third Avenue, as well as a small segment of First Avenue just to the east of that, and then some asphalt work on Marion Boulevard from the city limits to essentially a Seventh Street roundabout. And there's also plenty more work to do. This is our twenty twenty seven plus list. This is kind of the backlog. So as I go through the program, we will reassess the streets to be done on a yearly basis. We'll adjust for construction costs, other projects that might become more of a priority just to essentially try to line up to use as much money as we can to get as much done, but also limit the impacts of, let's say, traffic. Make sure we're not closing too many arterial streets at the same time. So with that, that kind of concludes my discussion. Be happy to take any questions.
Go ahead, Jake. On these, thank, first of all, thank you for the presentation. On these twenty twenty seven as relative to the other slides that you've shown, are those projected red zones? Are those roads that are projected to be bad at that time? Are they bad today?
So right now, I did show the Alvernet Road extension on that one. It's not technically a reconstruction, but I didn't have a layer for construction. There's also areas on there, maybe the Twenty Second Street extended from Sixth Avenue to Seventh Avenue, as well as Seventh Avenue East from Twenty Second Street to Twenty Sixth Street. Those will be projected reconstruction projects as well as some city residential streets and intersections that we might need to make upgrades to for eighty eight purposes.
Are those items, though, that you feel that we would need to move forward in more current years, though, instead of waiting for?
I, at this time, we would plan for them, but I don't know if anything is quite urgent yet. We're
Okay.
It's kind of, reconstructions are expensive, so I don't want to use a lot of reconstruction budgets up in
Right.
in the early years. I'm kind of phasing this out because they, they take longer. There are more impacts of traffic, that sort of thing. So kind of phase the reconstructions to do a few of those a year as well as the rehabilitation projects, because I feel we get a lot more cost-effective use of our dollars with those projects.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, so Jake, in the past, we typically have had a million dollars in our budget for pavement rehabilitation outside of the HMA program. So I'm looking through here, although again, is, is that million dollars still in there?
Yeah, so that
Besides what you're proposing for the pavement management program?
Correct. So the pavement management program dollars that you would see on, on Brian's sheets,
Right.
we would have an additional one million dollars for the HMA overlay program as well. And that's what's reflected in this.
But then we also used to have a million dollars of just pavement rehabilitation.
So we had
Besides the HMA?
We had the Neighborhood Street Improvements Program, which was not a, a consistent annual amount of dollars.
Okay.
We're still utilizing that up, and that would be essentially, that would, that was the previous lost local option sales tax cycle. And so that would, we're in our last year of that. So that would finish up our Third Avenue reconstruction as well as the, the pavement patching projects I showed for twenty twenty three.
So I, I mean, I completely understand why at a minimum you're recommending three million dollars. That's just to keep even, I remember Mike presenting this to us a year ago, year and a half ago, when, whenever that was, we were talking about, how much do you want to spend, three million, seven million or ten million? And how much do you think you can absorb? The three million just kind of keeps us even. So to me, that makes a lot of sense. It also seems to make a lot of sense as you look at some of our past citizen surveys where they've always said streets have been, street improvements have been number one on the list, you know, for a number of years. So it does match up with that. Some citizens think we probably should be spending more, however, given the big picture that we're looking at, you know, for the CIP, at a minimum, I'm glad to see it at least go up to three million dollars to get more streets done.
Yes.
And while people will complain while they're getting done, you know, when they're done, we can at least tell them why we're doing it. These are the older sections of the streets of the city, and we, we've got the story at least, I think, behind it. So I think they'll understand it. I think it's a good topic for a newsletter down, down the future, too, is people understanding why we're spending this money and how we're deciding where it's spent. Because a lot of people, I think, don't understand. It's a tough area. They always say it should be my street. But there's a
And tell us.
An analysis behind it. Yeah, there's some logic.
The good thing about this is we can reassess this almost on a yearly or bi-yearly basis to see how we're doing. And if we need to increase levels, we can increase levels or we can pull back if we need to as well.
Okay, thanks. The city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. To Councilmember Jensen's point, Amber and I were actually just exchanging messages. We do plan on having this presentation included in the in-focus that goes out because this is important information for the community to understand that we don't just willy-nilly pick streets. It's based on data that, that curve, the, the life curve that Jake showed is a very important one on how we do that. I also did want to point out, council should have this document, as you're spotted at the desk. This does, it's kind of a dropdown, if you will. So this, the, the, it, it gives you more of the specific streets on the maps that, that Jake had shown.
Good. Questions? Other questions? Do you have anything else to add?
No, Mayor, I, I do have one just from the standpoint of you've, we've talked about standardizing some of what we do. The budget process is one of those processes that we wanted to establish and standardize it. So we go through it every year. As we go through the budget process, this is an example of a a presentation that we want to make sure that we are doing this on a regular basis in, in conjunction with our budget process for the council, for our community. Because like our CIP, this is an evolving document. This is an evolving program. We're going to go in with some understandings. We're going to do the analysis, and we're going to continue to analyze it every year throughout the year. And then what might be projected for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, that may change as we go through the analysis. So that is something that is, I think, is important for us to keep in front of you on a regular basis so that we can see the evolution and how these things take shape and take form and how we have to keep it fluid. We got a plan. We're going to work the plan, but sometimes that plan, plan does have to adapt to account for changing, then changing environment, costs and, and other factors that impact projects like this as well as our budget.
I love it. It's great. I mean, this, this, this whole process, both the CIP, the budgeting, everything that we're doing, just gives all of us more confidence as well as the public more confidence in how our city's spending the money. So it's terrific. Thank you. Okay, next is our discussion on the agenda for Thursday evening. Going to the agenda, the first items marked for discussion, well, A eleven and A twelve, any any items prior to that that any council members have questions on or would like to discuss prior to A eleven? Okay, we have Amber here to talk about A eleven and twelve together, or?
Yes, the three wayfinding items will be kind of grouping together. I'm going to keep the CIP theme going, and we've done on all of the three items related to wayfinding. Wayfinding has been included in our CIP for several years, but for various reasons has not take, gained traction, but this year we're committed to making progress. The funds allocated to this line item are supported by local option sales tax proceeds. A few years back, several of you might remember, we worked with Roger Brooks International on our community branding initiative. The city partnered with the Chamber and Uptown and Medco on this effort, and I know several of you were part of that process. So the following three items came out of that branding action plan or are tied to that, which was adopted back in twenty fifteen. First, we would like to solicit a request for qualifications for the development of a community wayfinding system design. As our community continues to grow and become a hub of activity, Wayfinding is an important piece to making sure residents and visitors. Can find where they're going, regardless of the type of transportation they're using. It also ties into the strategic plan goal of creating a vibrant community that is accessible, attractive, and open to both visitors and residents. It will help identify community gateways, municipal buildings, parks, landmarks, key districts, and parking. All things that kind of help people get where they're going. And it really helps project a cohesive identity for our community. To accomplish this, we'd like to issue an RFQ seeking qualified firms to help us develop this system. The successful firm would be asked to provide the bid, bid ready construction drawings, the plans for placement, the estimated cost and phasing of such a system. We formed a subcommittee with representatives from Parks and Recreation Department, the Planning Division, the Communications Division, in addition to the Chamber and Uptown Marion to kind of help usher this process. Through, and our hope is to invite the top three or four respondents to interview with the subcommittee and then bring our recommendation back to city council. For final approval. Are there any questions?
Questions? I think this is very timely, you know, with the increased. Trail connections are seeing more visitors with Prospect Meadows, with all the improvements we see in our town, there's just, there are more visitors. And I know I've been stopped a few times with people asking, where do I find this or that? And so it's, this is very timely, so. Anyone have questions?
Wonderful. So then, moving on to the next item, this brings back. An item that was discussed in June with Brooke, with the Uptown Organization, and. Speaking to the mayor's mention of timeliness, kind of jumps ahead of what that that larger picture wayfinding system could do. And hopefully, this could be in place by the Marion Arts Festival this May. So. I'll kind of hand it off to Brooke if you want to touch on the kiosk.
So we've done quite a bit of research on kiosks, and there's not a lot of companies out there that make these things. This is kind of the one we've settled on. The Uptown Design Committee has reviewed this. This would be a similar one to what we would purchase. It has four sides. You can do long ones that extend all the way to the base, or short ones, they could be backlit, or they could be more like a post-it board. You can have them closed with glass so that people can't post anything, or you can have them open that the public can post on them. So what we would like is a combination of four, all four of those things on ours. It would go in the North Plaza. There's electricity already up there for what was intended to be a future parking. Payment system, but that we foresee being quite a ways down the road. This is a good option to fill that space in the time being. And also, there's just a lot of other conversation that goes along with that. So that looked to be the perfect spot. We did look into the more electric ones that have. Digital screen boards in them. There were a couple options out there. The majority of them don't work really well in our climate. They have to be heated and have to have condensation control. Or it will fry the internal components. There are also a lot of maintenance costs to those, and most of them have subscription fees of around twenty five hundred dollars a year. To manage the content in those. They do allow for ads to be placed on them to make up for those costs. But we felt that this, in the more traditional sense, fit the district better. You also might have read in your packet, there is a code. Sign code that prohibits us from putting a digital board like that. We don't want to be breaking our own rules either, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Brooke on that? Okay. Sarah, go ahead.
So. So this is, so this is like the. Tech up a notification or put up a list type of boards, not not lit, because it doesn't work. So it's for the use of, so what do we? What do we think would be on these? Like, what is, what is going to be the main?
What's the content?
Yeah.
So what we kind of envisioned is a more static board that would show the list of events for the whole year. That would, you know, be a backlit, a really great static piece. Another one could have maps and trail maps, Parks Department information, and closed, so that that would have a key and lock for only staff. From our office and from Parks and Amber.
So it could be a directional map for Uptown, or where that points where all the stores are, or things like that?
Yep.
Establishments, okay.
We could also look at options for that bottom part where there are plaques. To put maybe the boxes that contain maps in them that people can grab and take out. And there's lots of different options and modifications that we can make to this. If you have suggestions, we'd be open to it. Or on another side, we can have a bulletin board that's for the public, too.
That would just be one side of it?
Yeah, we would like to monitor the majority of the sides of this for content.
I agree with you on that. I think it's a great. I mean, I think about when I travel, what are you looking for information? Sometimes offices aren't open. You want to be able to, you can pull some of it on your phones, but sometimes you don't have. Believe it or not, access. If you're traveling internationally, you may not have a. Access on your phone, so you need that piece of paper. So appreciate that. But I was just trying to envision, like. Bulletin board, a bunch of papers, you know. I'm like, yes, and I'm like.
So that, at most, that would be one side of it.
At most, I mean.
Okay.
We do see lots of people try to tape them to light poles, or or when we had wood electrical poles, they'd be stapled to them. So there, there are groups that do go around and try to put those up in different places. So I don't, I don't think it wouldn't be utilized, but is that something we want? That's a good question.
Other questions for Brooke or Amber? And this is a budgeted item? Just for.
It would be included as part of the CIP funding for wayfinding in the current budget.
And the next one?
In the current fiscal year.
Okay.
Yep.
Right.
And then the third item I wanted to touch on, and this also ties back to our branding initiative back in twenty fifteen. As new street markers have been added at signalized intersections, we've started transitioning to the new design that. Supports our current look and feel, and we have several older signs that are illegible. The reflectivity is gone, or. Have been damaged through the derecho, and we're at the point where we'd like to request your approval of. The wholesale, wholesale purchase of new street mast arm, street mast arm signs. That reflect the new design for all intersections. I think it will go a long way in kind of that. Direction, provide, providing those, that directional signage and unifying the look of our community. This would also come from that line item dedicated to wayfinding funds. With the purchase from Iowa Prison Industries.
Okay, questions on that one? I think we're good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both. Under public service, no items are marked for discussion. Are there any questions on those items? Okay, we'll move on to public safety. See, we have. Chief here, okay.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I've brought Lieutenant Ryan Stephan with me. We're bringing it up for this week's business. And so this is actually something that hits to the core of our mission at Marion Fire. In regards to saving lives. So back in twenty twenty one, Judy and Gary Stevens provided a donation with their trust to the city. And as a part of that, what they identified is they would like those monies to be used for lifesaving equipment. And so one of the items that Lieutenant Stephan had brought forward for us to move forward as an initiative. Is to increase our capabilities when the Marion Fire Department arrives on scene in regards to chest compressions. And so what we're wanting to move forward with those funding, or with that funding, is to purchase the Lucas chest compression system. And what this provides is this provides the highest quality CPR possible, which equates to saving more lives. These, these systems would be deployed from each one of our frontline fire apparatus, from each one of our fire stations to serve our community. And so as we're moving forward, I want to talk a little bit about the EMS system within the city of Marion and provide some CPR data. And then Lieutenant Stefan is going to talk about this device in particular, and some of the outcome data. That we can look forward to seeing in our community. So the emergency medical system in Marion is really three major components. First of all, it includes our community, our Good Samaritans. So our residents and our visitors are a part of the emergency medical system. A good example of that, and and why I want to emphasize this is so critical recently. On a public display on national television was a sudden cardiac arrest event that occurred during a professional football game. Rapid CPR definitely made an impact in the survivability of that professional athlete, and that transcends to all people everywhere. Good Samaritans can impact the cardiac survivability when there is a sudden cardiac arrest. With bystander CPR increasing their chances of survival by up to three times. And so Good Samaritans are a part of our EMS system, as is the Marion Fire Department, which provides paramedics upon the arrival of our apparatus. We can prevent, begin lifesaving actions at that time, which includes numerous advanced life support actions. But as a part of that, this, this initiative will bolster the quality of CPR that would be provided. In addition to that, the area ambulance service also provides transportation to area hospitals for further care. So last year, looking at some cardiac arrest data, there were thirty seven sudden cardiac arrest events. Of those, just under thirty eight percent of those had a return of spontaneous circulation or a pulse. Upon the transfer of care to the hospital, which is higher than the national average, which is great news. However, this is a fairly small data set. At thirty seven, and so the national statistics would include a much larger data set. And so this will be something that we'll continue to watch closely to make sure that we're continuing to provide high quality outcomes in our community. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Lieutenant Stefan, who's going to talk about the Lucas device, which we're very excited about, and its impact for our community. Lieutenant Stefan.
Thanks, Chief. So what is the Lucas chest compression system? So it's a huge benefit for not only the fire department, but the residents of Marion. What it does is it delivers, it's a better operated device that delivers compressions when we get on scene of cardiac arrest patient. So we look at the core values of Stryker, and it delivers high quality CPR. It's consistent, and it does the high quality chest compression. So it kind of goes in regards to the American Heart Association as far as the depth of compression, the speed of compression, or the the speed of what compression should be. It also has operational efficiencies. It frees up hands on scene, and it eliminates CPR transitions. So what it does is, instead of us doing manual CPR, doing compressions, this takes the. It takes over as far as compressions. That way, that rescue worker can have their hands free. And then we can look at treatment for underlying causes of why this person's in cardiac arrest. And then there's also increased safety, so increased responder safety by eliminating human CPR transitions in awkward positions. So CPR can happen when you're in a bathroom, a motorized vehicle. It also happens when we do transition from a patient being on the cot from the house to the ambulance, from the ambulance to the hospital. So when you have a human actually doing compressions on top of a cot on the patient, it's not as high quality as what this machine will do, so it actually frees up hands for us. The next slide I'm going to show you is actually a bar graph, and the bar graph, you'll notice, has a gray bar, and then it'll have a gold bar. The gray bar is basically the manual CPR by human, and then the gray bar or the gold bar is actually when the Lucas device is implemented. So the data was pulled, you can see from the bottom, like Chief said, return of spontaneous circulation where we've gained a pulse. We have a measurable blood pressure, or somebody's starting to breathe, to admission to the hospital, to one month survival after cardiac arrest. And also cerebral brain perfusion, so, or cerebral perfusion, where we're getting more blood to the brain and oxygen to the brain. So as you can see by this bar graph, with the implementation of a Lucas device in cardiac arrest events, there's a significant increase for survivability for patients. With Lucas device.
Thanks, Lieutenant. As a part of this, we wanted to make sure that we thanked the Stevens family. We did reach out to them, a representative on their behalf, to let them know we would be bringing this to the commission this week. And we did get a response, an email back from the family by Ann Axmer, who said that it's wonderful that Gary. And Judy's legacy of helping others in the community continues. So I wanted to absolutely thank their family for their contribution to the, to the community for us to do. And absolutely provide equipment that is going to save lives in our community. So wanted to touch on just two quick items. In conjunction to this topic, we are providing a community CPR training event in February. And so it's February eighteenth. I believe there are still spots available for that. In addition to that, we are providing. Hands-only CPR and AED training to all city staff. That is going to be happening in February as well. And so looking forward to increasing education and empowering our community to take action. To where we can increase the chances of survival to to these events in Marion. With that, do you have any questions for us?
Appreciate that. Yeah. Any questions, Randy?
Sure, I'll ask the question. Thank you. I figured you'd have a question. Yeah, these, these striker. Components are incredible. I've seen those actually in work. Just for the benefit of the crowd, though, could you tell us? Do, does this chest compression apparatus work in conjunction with AEDs and also then? The delivery of breaths? Can you just explain how that actually works between the compressions and adding the breaths to that?
Yeah, Lieutenant Stefan, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, so the first question, as far as can we use like an AED or a cardiac monitor with the chest compression system on? We do. We have the ability to actually stop the compression so that we can actually check for a pulse and a cardiac rhythm to see where they're at. If we do get a rhythm, then obviously we'll stop compressions, and then. We'll do other interventions that we need to do. And as far as breathing goes, we can still do our normal BLS or ALS, our advanced life support stuff. As well as securing the airway and do airway maneuvers if we need to during chest compression. So we do have the ability to stop the compressions we needed.
All right, thank you. Again, I am. These are great pieces of equipment. Again, it's just a matter of having the tools and. And compressions are very labor intensive for those that have not gone through the CPR process. So the compressions, that's why. You rotate out frequently because it is very labor intensive, and that's the most critical piece is, is to keep the compressions going for the heart. That's what keeps pushing the blood through the body. So. Kudos to you for bringing this forward. The, again, it's just about, there's a lot of technology out there that's available that we're just touching the bases of. So thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief. Lieutenant, thank you very much. Okay, on to parts.
Good evening, Council, Your Honor. Back in October of last year, Council gave direction for staff to work with RDG. To provide some conceptuals for the potential caboose relocation from City Square Park. So the main goals of this project was to provide imagery, to provide a conceptual, to be able to use, utilize for a tool for planning and for the potential relocation. We also wanted to preserve the historical value of the railway that used to come through, through Marion, and be able to educate and show. Show the history for that. We also wanted to provide a destination along the trail. When we look, talk about Grant Wood, we have different destinations along the trail. The. Waldorf Rock Park, this potential location, Uptown Plaza, then also Thomas Park up to Cedar Rapids. So the location we're talking about in mind is just off of Thirty First Street. This is a location that's city property along Grant Wood Trail. Sits just south of the American Legion Building, and the property actually goes from Thirty First Street to Thirty Fifth. Thirty Fifth, Thirty Fifth Street. So the conceptual plan that we are presenting here is the caboose is located in a central location, and really, the concept plays on the train switchyard. Which, if you ask, where was the original switchyard? It was, it's actually just west. where was the original switchyard? It was, it's actually just west, uh, just past the Starbucks and the roundabout there. So this is kind of a play on the switchyard. It provides the existing trail switches to two, uh, two trails with bookend, uh, social areas or patios with interpretive science to provide that educational information. And then it provides the caboose and and some other railroad affiliated items to kind of tie, uh, tie the part together. Here is a vantage point from above. So this is the existing trail and then the South Trail is what would be additional. Uh, the rail, the trails, the the rails that are along there is estimated to be between a hundred to a hundred twenty a hundred twenty feet. And this is conceptual. One of the conversations with 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 the tracks being the length that it is, is provides opportunities for play. So I mean, if kids there, it's a balanced walk in the railway. But it also provides opportunity if if the city ever comes into fruition of locomotive, uh, provides that area for potential growth. And here's some other vantage points. One, uh, looking, uh, from the the top one is looking westbound towards Thirty Fifth Street or Thirty Thirty First Street. And then, uh, the bottom one is looking looking west, almost northeast, uh, which you can see the American Legion in the background there. And then this is a top view with the American Legion just up on the top side of us. So we presented these concepts to, uh, last week, uh, to the American Legion, uh, to the Historical Preservation Committee, and then also to the Marion Parks and Recreation Board with approval with with this concept. Uh, we still have conversations, continued conversations with American Legion, but they were pretty, pretty pleased with with this design. One of the worries that they had was taken away from the Veterans Memorial. And as we progress through the Caesar conceptual designs, some of the next steps that we would look at is, um, if, um, with a potential Plaza project, if that is moved forward, this project's approved, we would have continued conversations about, um, you know, the progress, presenting these plans. I would assume there would be people coming forward with with other artifacts and things of that nature that could add to it or could be put into a historical preservation area. But this is a, uh, but we would talk with the American Legion about, you know, how do we enhance some of the amenities there such as the Veterans Memorial? And conversations about parking, there's no intent for this to be a trailhead by any means. But we do know people park there currently to use a trail. People are going to continue to park there. So what agreement or mutual agreement can we come to to kind of partner on on that kind of?
We were asked that question at the office hours on Saturday at the library, that there's access by trail, but where's the parking going to be for people to just drive there and and if they wanted to see this park?
Yeah, and and that's what we would, we would work with the Legion is, is, you know, what available parking can we, can we utilize?
It'd be by agreement with the.
So yeah, it would be by agreement that we would do that.
And I would think that they you know, this, this would be, this would increase exposure for the Veterans Memorial. And because people are stopping there now, you know, and the opportunity. So if I was them, I'd want to put a sidewalk connecting the two.
Yes, absolutely. And, you know, and, you know, things we talked about too with with them too is, you know, as, as, you know, this is going to be a stop along the destination. So I mean, if there is a special event, like a special bike ride going through and they stop here, you know, it's an opportunity for the Legion to to kind of interact with with the general.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's good for everybody. So where are the educational? So black characters. I don't, I didn't.
So.
Know that I saw that.
There's some examples that we have shown here. They're going to be, uh, we have one just uh, on the bottom side of the trail there or the the rails there. They're kind of kiosk signs. You know, one of the books that we were, we're looking at is is rail cars, trolleys, uh, for Marion. And so that'd be something that as we move forward, having a committee to kind of vet, you know, if there's artifacts that come through, vet that, but also that some of the educational pieces are being presented. But they're going to be more of a kiosk sign. But we have one located right near the crossing guard or the cross, the the crossing where it splits there is just a kind of a kiosk type of signage and then one there. Uh, but it could be many, could be a few. It's, it's really going to be, it determine, you know, how much information it wants to be expressed in this park.
Yeah, I think just some high, you know, important facts that that highlight how important it was or how major it was to
Oh, absolutely.
Our city and photographs, uh, you know, things like that.
I mean, it's, it's why how Marion is kind of designed, why there's churches along Sixth Avenue, because the railway was there and that was kind of how it formatted. So I think there's a lot of, lot of cool history that could be told in this park.
Is that your presentation?
That is, that is my presentation. Any questions or? Comments?
This looks fantastic. I haven't seen anything on this, but this is really a great first step. I understand where the Legion would be a little bit cautious because I know this is getting to be a very popular trail and I'm hoping this is a popular park. So I could see where they would be cautious that their parking lot becomes you know, very popular place. And so, and it's their lot and you know, you have pieces with that. So I respect their questions and I think we have to continue to look at how we come up with solutions for that. So did you mention the caboose? Is it excessive? I mean, I'm gonna, I'll say this, this is an unpopular opinion, but I'm going to say it, probably regret it, but you know, one of the things I've always been concerned with, with it being in the park is it's a big metal object with a lot of metal on it. I mean, you wouldn't put this in it. You wouldn't put this on a school playground. You wouldn't put this, if we put on a school playground and play on this, people would be mortified. Why would you? You would never allow that to happen, but we're like, okay, here's our caboose, like play on it in the, in the park. So but I understand my kids liked it. My kids went back when you could actually go in it, um, because they're older. What does that look like as a structure in our park to, for a safety component as well as far as, you know, people using it or in it?
Yeah, so, so this will be a fixed unit and we do have, uh, money in, in, uh, at least when we were going through cost, uh, probability cost for this project and what's was in the CIP presentation, we did put money aside to, uh, do some small refurbishment, you know, as far as, you know, painting and making sure that there, you know, some of those liability concerns are there. This will not be, what we're presenting is not something that people will be able to climb in or go into. It is something that though we would have it, you know, you can go up to a ground level, you can still interact, you can still touch it, things of that nature. Because I think that's really, you know, touches is is huge when we talk about sensory, uh, items within the parks and uh, so it is something interactive, but it's definitely going to be a fixed unit. So, um, you know, well, a lot of the liability concerns we'll, we'll try to eliminate, we'll still uh, do monthly inspections, just like, you know, anything we do within our parks or playground areas to make sure that, you know, we don't have entanglements or items that could puncture and things of that nature too.
So it's meant to be, hopefully intended to be something that kids can go look at be a part of, but but it'll be out to the fact of it's not like you're not worried about some, you know, you're smashed.
Absolutely. And then, you know, when we talk about the railway, the length of that, you know, you know, if if anybody's been in a small town with the railroad, I mean, just walking the, the, the railway, I know that's not a typically recommended, but you know, just balancing and and doing those and kids still get motor skills and and kind of can play, have some elements of play, even though it's not designed for, for that uh, area. So.
This is a picture, picture place. Um, you know, the kids are always looking for the pictures, the dress pictures, the dance pictures, the fun, cool background look as well for the older ones. So good job, Tim.
Anyone else?
Oh, go ahead, Randy.
Thank you. I feel like I gotta have a Paul Draper moment here. Um, back in the day, how many people remember the old Tiller? Fire truck that was in Thomas Park, uh, years ago. Does anybody remember the old ladder truck? It's kind of, this kind of reminds me a little bit of, uh, bringing back that nostalgia, um, when we had that old fire truck. As part, and that was actually part of the, I mean, kids could climb up and around it and and on it, but the times have changed a little bit. Okay, have, have, sorry, I was just gonna have, has there been any communication to the business to the south of this? I know we talked about the Legion on the north, but on the south, has there been any communication with that, um, business entity there?
We, we have it, but we could definitely follow up, uh, with that. That's a very good suggestion, you know. Often forgotten just because of how much screening there is, uh, with the trail, but we definitely follow up with that.
And I, the only reason I bring that up is because I do that as a large parking lot on that business site as well too. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Seth.
Thank you.
D two is not marked. Any questions, uh, for Seth on that? Okay, um, on to engineering. Mike?
Yes, sir. So item E three is marked. Um, so just bringing this to, uh, Council's awareness that we do have a twenty eight E. This is for the five million dollars that we got for the CPF funding from Henson's office. She added it to a bill and I got approved. So this is just allocating that money to the different organizations. Uh, the city of Marion will get approximately thirty-two point seven seven percent of that, and this will get the plans ready so that they are shovel-ready. So this is preliminary engineering, property acquisition. Uh, there are several aspects that go into these plans for the five million.
Okay, questions? Okay, I didn't ask if there are questions on E one and E two. There are. No? Okay. Uh, E four through E six are not marked. Any questions on those? E seven.
All right, so E seven will have the project calendar on this at a later council, uh, item. But this is the actual wetland credit purchase. Um, so sometimes the DNR and the Carmichael Engineers has let us, uh, replant wetlands. Sometimes they make us buy credits. So in this case, they're making us buy credits. So for those that don't recall, uh, this is Agnet Seven, which is basically Menarge, the Mount Cavalry Cemetery within Marion. We're going from, uh, I believe it's a thirty-six inch sewer to a sixty inch sewer. Um, and ultimately it goes down to the, the water treatment center. So this is buying the, the credits from the bank, um, the Black Hawk Bank. So this will be shared amongst all the other municipalities as part of the, the twenty eighty.
Questions? Okay, stay right there, but, uh, under the abstention calendar, there are two items that are not, and they're not marked. Any questions on those? Otherwise, we'll move on to the regular agenda, engineering, which I believe all items are marked almost. Okay.
I'll make them quick though.
Go ahead.
So the first one again is the, the project that we just talked about. The engineer's estimate is, is ten point three million dollars. Yeah, I'm going from a, I believe a thirty-six to a sixty inch diameter sanitary sewer. It has a bid date of two fourteen twenty-three, completion date of nine fifteen of twenty twenty-four and five hundred dollars per day in liquidated damages. Just for a rehab of the twenty-eight E, Marion pays for thirty-two point nine percent of it. Cedar Rapids pays for twenty-eight and a half, Hiawatha sixteen point nine, and Robbins twenty-one point seven percent of the project. So we front that ten point three, but then working with finance, we'll send bills to the other entities that are part of that twenty E and they'll pay for their proportionate shares of it.
Pretty straightforward. Any questions? Okay, next item.
So the next item is the project calendar for the twenty twenty-three HMA project. So we have one million dollars to center our budget. So the engineer's estimate is just under that million dollars. Again, we'll bid February fourteenth, has a completion date of nine twenty-three, twenty, twenty-nine, twenty-three. It has a milestone completion date in there of eight eighteen twenty-three and three hundred dollars per day in liquidated damages for that project. The locations here as well. We can see Lindale, West Eighth, Ninth, several local streets.
That Lindale Drive and West Eighth ought to make people happy. Often hear comments about those. So any questions on that? Okay, next item.
So the next item is another project calendar. This is for the sidewalk ramp project. So this is an annual program. Engineer's estimate is a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Bid's the same date of February fourteenth, early start date of five thirty of twenty-three with a late start date of seven twenty-four, twenty-three, fifty working days, three hundred dollars per day in liquidated damages. A lot of times this follows the HMA program that we did the previous year. So we take those ramps that don't meet the street anymore. We put the domes in, I'll make them ADA compliant. Uh, depending on how far we have to go back to get the right slopes and everything with that. So this is one of those projects that we, we have to do. It's last time we updated our ADA transition plan, I believe it was going to take about thirty years to do. We'll be bringing in a, an update to that ADA transition plan back to city council so they can look at that again. And maybe we look at that one forty-five number in future budget years and say, you know, maybe we don't want it to go thirty years, maybe we want to be done in fifteen. As I've told you before, the problem is the Department of Justice itself cannot agree to what is qualifying as a transition panel. So the domes that you see out there today that we put in there, someone that's in a wheelchair doesn't like those because when they roll over those, they rock and so that's hard on the body. Versus someone who is blind wants that indication to know, hey, I'm leaving the safety of the sidewalk and I'm entering the street. So they still haven't come to a consensus and so we're still doing pro ag, which is proposed regulations. It's still not official regulation. So by the time we get all the, the ramps up to compliance, the rules will likely change. But nevertheless, we still have to move forward. We have to continue to make our ramps ADA compliant or we lose our road use funds.
Questions on that? Okay, next item.
The next project we're calling the ten ninety-five Sixth Avenue Site Disposal Project. The engineer's estimate is half a million dollars. Bids on the fourteenth of February, so we'll have a few bids that day. Has a completion date of May twenty-sixth with three hundred dollars per day in liquidated damages. We will leave the parking lot there. And so it's just taking down the building and then reseating that area. So it'd be a, a grass area for either events or future development when that comes.
Questions? Okay, next item.
So the next item on Thursday, we will have a public hearing regarding the twenty twenty-three Storm Sewer Project. Uh, for this one, we're only showing the first four bids. For those that are, um, attending it virtually or would like to see the rest of it in the packet, we did include the full bid tab of every item and all the bids. We had nine total bids. So it was nice to see that many people interested in the project. But so we're just showing the, the highlight of the, the four low bids. I actually have not worked with Ralston Construction, but they're at a Palo, so they've done a lot of private work in the past. So Jake, the assistant, uh, city engineer, has worked with him in the private sector before he came to the city. So we're recommending moving, proceeding with that contract with them.
Questions? Okay, next item.
All right, so we had a tack item, uh, a month or so ago regarding, uh, a request for additional streetlight All right, so we had a tack item uh, a month or so ago regarding uh, a request for additional street light on Thirty-Fifth Avenue and to add some speed limit signs. Uh, most city streets are twenty-five miles per hour unless otherwise posted. And we don't have speed limit signs on them. So to address that, we're going to have targeted enforcement from the police department. And then, as you may or may not recall, Thirty-Fifth Avenue, when it was gravel, was actually farther here to the south. So the street light at the intersection is actually clear down here. And so I've already contacted Alliance and they're willing to move that pole at no cost to the city and actually put it at the intersection, which will help that intersection be lit better. So that is the the tack recommendation. So this can combine several items. So this will be
Seven, eight and nine.
Yep, and so we'll have the public comment. So far, we have received one uh, public comment and we'll present that on Thursday along with any others that wish to comment.
We might want to clarify item E nine uh, to just include the mention of Thirty-Fifth Avenue in that motion. Any questions? Okay, next item.
Next item, uh, so Farnow Road or the the road that Twenty-Ninth Avenue turns into east of Highway thirteen. We've had a lot of development in this area. So this used to be all county. Um, the area over here is Rookwood that has a lot of houses on it. So the aerial hasn't been updated since that development has occurred. And then there's actually some development proposals as well for this portion. So with that, we've worked with the county. We did uh, traffic study, did uh, speed counts. The eighty-fifth percentile was forty-five miles an hour. However, with all the development, all the driveways, staff is actually recommending that we post it as thirty-five miles an hour. Um, so that we'll take three readings to do that speed limit. And so this isn't driven by a petition, just the fact that we're annexing more land into the city. Um, the county is okay with lowering the speed limit to thirty-five. So it'll transition from fifty-five to thirty-five, similar to what it does on a lot of our other arterials when we um, transition from county to city.
Okay, questions? Okay, E twelve.
And E twelve, again, this one was just driven by staff. So again, the aerial isn't up to date as to what's out there today. This intersection used to be a three-way. Now it's a four-way with twenty-second extending all the way to sixth. With six being completed, there's a lot more traffic at this intersection. Um, so right now, there's a stop sign for north and southbound, but not for east-west. Um, all the other intersections along Fifth Avenue are four-way stops. Um, we have had some accidents at this intersection and I can tell you as a person who uses this intersection, it feels like it should be a four-way when you come and approach it, either going north or southbound. So tax recommendation is to make that into a four-way stop control.
Okay, questions on that one?
Go ahead, Will.
I know I brought this up to you before, but I think this is a good location to do a stop sign that has the red lights in the light, in the sign that flash. I know we've talked about this before, but I think they'd be an excellent location for that since it is a a street that's never had a stop sign before. You get a lot of people that speed down that street unfortunately. And when the new sign comes in, I know you said they're going to put the flags on it, but this would flash so people would notice it more. Um, hopefully to prevent another accident at that location, which is the whole reason for the the stop sign.
So if if city council would like to proceed that way, I would modify the motion on Thursday, vote that way. Because that's going to cost more money to put up that with either solar panels or a meter versus a regular stop sign.
What what's the difference in cost? I mean, approximately, I'll switch to the.
I have not put in a stop sign. I'd have to do some research for Thursday, but I can see what I can find out, but there would be additional cost.
So Will, is it your, is it your idea that that those flashing signs would stay there permanently? Or be on a temporary basis as people get used to it?
Yeah, that's something too that you could do is is use them. So once I'm six months down the road or whatnot, the signs could come out and new, and traditional stop signs could come in once the public's used to stop there. And then those signs could be used at other locations where a new stop sign's getting put in. That was my thought too. Thank you for bringing that up. That we would wouldn't have to buy them constantly. If we want to start using those at some locations, you can just kind of recycle them throughout the city. And if you do the solar powered ones, good examples in Cedar Rapids on Fifteenth Street and Third Avenue, they have solar powered ones at that intersection, which when you're coming down that straightaway, you you notice it because it's flashing, so. I would, if it's not a crazy amount of money, would like to see that happen at this location. Again, because it is, there is a lot of speeding on Fifth. I use Fifth Avenue multiple times every day because I live right in that locate, in that area. And I've actually come across two of the four accidents that have happened, or at least reported accidents that have happened there, and they're not. One vehicle was flipped over, so it's it's kind of a dangerous intersection now.
Is the cost difference going to be earth shattering or?
I will have that information for you on Thursday.
Okay, so um, how do we get, how do we give direction tonight? Just wait till Thursday?
You've given, you've given direction. We'll be prepared. Just, we need it formal on the record. Encapsulated in the minutes and recorded in the minutes. So as you're making the motion, just incorporate that that direction into that.
Our, our, I guess our um, past uh, practice has been that we 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 need more than one person to give direction to staff. So is there anyone who's objecting to it or or has any strong feelings against it?
I think it's a good idea. I second that.
Okay, all right. Looks like we do have the direction. Okay.
And and this is um, what Councilman Brandt had had referenced is, I mean, it is common in communities when you're putting up a new stop sign where there is nothing, you either mark it with the flags that uh, Mike was referencing or um, the the flashing. So, uh, and then you you desert, you you would normally designate it for a period of time to allow the motorists to become familiar with that change and then you would rotate it out.
Um, you might just tell us on Thursday what your suggested time period is, or you might include that in the motion or?
Yeah, and I know for the intersection of uh, Echo and Albernet, when we made that into a four-way stop, that did have, it wasn't the the sign that was flashing, but it had the red on top of it with a solar panel. And I don't know if we still have those or if the contractor got those, but that's something where we we may have those, but those are different than having the actual sign eliminated.
But if you think that works, I mean, you're the expert, right? If you still have them.
Yeah, I guess.
We'll find out on Thursday. Okay. Any other questions for Mike? All right, Keshia, do you have the next item? Thank you, Mike.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. So I just wanted to provide a quick update. So this should look familiar. This is the uh, I believe the public hearing was closed, but the resolution was tabled regarding annexation um, of Frasier Land Investments LLC and and other properties as well along East Robbins Road. So again, it's an eighty-twenty as well within that eighty-twenty requirement of the state. Um, since the last meeting, staff has spoken again, staff has done and uh, uh, researched and looked into and reread the state code as far as um, home occupations. Are we limited by the state? Are we um, so on and so forth. Um, and then also, uh, I've listed out the agencies that I've also contacted regarding chicken um, operations and also the home occupation as it's allowed in the county currently. So in your staff report, that's that's included in there. Um, so that item has has been discussed with the property owner. So Kim and I sat down last week with the property owner as well. Um, so unfortunately, that doesn't change for the property owner. The the uses would still be considered legal non-conforming, so allowed to continue, but not allowed to grow. Um, and then again, the tenure transition is proposed to be applied to all the properties um, within the, within the annexation consenting and non-consenting and then allowed to continue as legal non-conforming. Any questions?
And wa- was there further discussion with the um, objecting homeowner?
Yes, Kim and I sat down with her last week after staff was able to relook at all of the codes. She understood.
Understands what the impact is and all that.
Yes, Keshia did a great job just going through. We really honestly just took the list, you know, all those questions that were asked. How they are in county today, how they, how it would work in the city of Marion moving forward and just broke all of that down. The property owner asks great questions, walked through it with us. Um, really, I think it was a really good process to go through.
Any questions?
So we um, so we're moving, potentially moving, is the staff, has the staff recommendation changed on this after going through the research or anything else on this? We're, okay.
Just uh, for informational purposes, since it is my profession and I see what comes on the market and what what's for sale, the property and that we're talking about here uh, has been listed for sale on the multiple listing service.
Other questions? Okay, thanks, Keshia. All right, this brings us to our motion for the closed session.
Your Honor, make a motion to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation into real estate transaction as permitted under section twenty-one point five one C and section twenty-one point five one J of the Code of Iowa, two separate items.
Removed in second to adjourn to closed session regarding litigation and a real estate transaction according to um, under sections twenty-one point five one C and twenty-one point five one J of the code. All right, uh, we have the legal counsel statement.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, sections twenty-one point five one C and twenty-one point five one J.
Any discussion before we vote? Call call, please.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mayor Abboasely?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Mensor?
Yes.
Mr. Sternay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for joining us. Thanks to everyone and we will adjourn to closed session.